I'd like to call the Lord this meeting of the Mercer County Board of Education, Mr. Burrow, please.
Good evening everyone. District one, Amber Franceschi.
Here.
District two, Amy Hart.
Here.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Here.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Here.
District five, Randy Francis.
Here. It's now time for our pledge of allegiance, so please rise if you are able.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic which sustains, all my nation and with God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Can I please have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Make it.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pruitt, second, all favor. Time for our recognitions for the evening, Mr. Burrow.
I do not see, we are going to recognize Barbara Montgomery, who's the manager of our local Dairy Queen, for her providing the Dairy Queen blizzards each month for all of our superior-type board members. So we'll, she said she may be able to make it back, I'll see her here, so we'll try to hold this plaque for next month, and if not, I'll take it over there, she may get it in her business.
Well, we greatly appreciate her, her Dairy Queen sponsorship, that great work.
And the kids, we really appreciate that.
Well, I would too, if I got a free one. Okay, we have no incentive for public participation, so we will go ahead and move on to our reports. And first up, Amber Minor, the finance report.
Okay, hello. Okay, so these are kind of preliminary numbers for ending the fiscal year, because we are still, obviously, receiving some revenue, and we're posting back into last year, and we still have some expenses that are coming in, and were actually expenses that were due for last year as well, but we're just now receiving invoices, and that can think, so we're just now making those payments as well. So as the next couple of months go, we're posting those things back into last fiscal year, making audit adjustments, our auditor will be here in the first week of August, and so we'll kind of start that process with her, and then we will finalize the financial statements for this year and the audit by November 15th. But, just the preliminary numbers, you know, very healthy. So, on the revenue side, the actual, at the point in time that I did these financial reports, was 31.8 million, which is a 12% increase from the prior fiscal year. We had budgeted 29.5 million, so the actual exceeded that. Our local taxes were 11.1 million, which is a 7.6% increase, and SIC was 11.1 million. Our interest earnings was a 5.2 decrease from the prior year, which part of that is a little bit of the bank balance, but then also interest rates as well throughout the year compared to prior year, so we definitely see that in those numbers. And then on the expense side, the year-to-date, at the point in time that I pulled this report, was 22.8 million, which was a 10% increase from the prior year. And then on, we had 25.9 million actually budgeted, so we did have 3.1 million remaining at that time. We didn't have any large per se purchases other than school buses, the school buses that we had originally put in for last year, hadn't made it yet, and we canceled those purchase orders, and we created new purchase orders for this year. So it's very possible, if any buses we order this year actually come in this year as well, that it's going to look like we purchased double the buses in this year on our financial statements compared to what we would have. It's a timing thing, so sometimes that happens. Hopefully, they come in quicker than may have been the last few years, but we'll see. So as far as our categorical spending, it has stayed roughly around the same the last few months. And then our income balance was 17.5% higher than prior fiscal year at that point in time. So, everything looks pretty strong, our SIC dollars are increased, or looking to increase next year as well, but of course, we received some news on some federal dollars that are kind of halted right at this moment, which does impact our district, and so we're kind of waiting to see what that looks like, or I'm really sure what that will look like, but hopefully I'll have some more information before we do working budget in September. Any questions?
Good night, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you very much. Next, Esther, our attempt at tomorrow.
Good evening, so we finished the school year, and when our SARS submitted that, you can see that the intermediate school and the high school both had really great attendance this school year overall. Everybody had good attendance, so, you know, it's likely to be higher, obviously, but intermediate's one, the high school's was struggling, definitely strong, and so we're, that's where we are in it, so, and then that gets into your SARS, which is what I was talking about, funding.
You're glorious. What's our overall per se?
Overall, the district, I didn't run that one, but I mean, I had to do some math.
That's all.
Yeah, so, you know, it's a little bit lower than it has been in the past couple of years, just that, you know, personal costs, but I didn't mind, where we can see that average daily is there, and so I can do that now, just for the.
Oh, you have it, I'm right about the behavior.
There it is, it's not fine, and she's like a big fat.
She's like, you can send her.
If it was that to me, we'd be pushing 96, but that's almost, and I realize that's a, that's a big ask, so, you know, we're probably pushing, district-wide, you know, we're probably pushing somewhere, I would guess the 93s, somewhere around there.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe.
Yeah, I heard tomorrow.
What's it about?
I wish we were posting it forward, I doubt it, I just, you know, but I'll say it's that's all, it's a different, it's a different.
Do you know what the state average is?
No, of attendance overall, no comparative to anything. They have, we, we just got numbers, so they'll share those out, so I should look at some games this time.
We had met the fall, like last year, we were number one right in central Kentucky for attendance, and those tell us the state average as well, so.
Yeah, no, they, they kitty pushes out of the park, once they get it all, and they have to push that out again, so.
Yeah, we get those.
Not even 1.3 is that average?
That's not accurate.
Don't do that. Don't do what I just did.
What you did was no.
Don't add, don't add those and divide by six, it's not, it's not accurate.
Yeah, that's not, don't do that.
Also, it's got the same effect on our kids.
Yeah, don't do that.
Thank you.
Do they used to teach math?
I got a number, but I didn't imagine it.
A number, so.
It's not, it's not.
So, we're not going to.
Personnel report was shared, they would not, they just agree for you. So we'll go ahead and move on to our presentations, I will make them.
Do we have a lot of open positions still, or?
No, most of them are being filled right now, you know, the one area, like a special ed, of course, that's a statewide, we've got a one or two open there, we've got a middle school math, high school math, that just came open, and a high school science, and that's really the four main, right, span, math, the middle school math, high school, high school science, those are the four.
We have a physical therapist now, too. So that's what cat was.
And I know that the presidents have said.
Athletic training. That's what cat was.
Is it not in field yet?
No, that's going to be.
Probably so, physical therapy season.
Yeah, the, I know the presidents have told me that it's helped them recruit good teachers, that, you know, we've got teachers that are doing lateral moves from other districts to here, which is a great thing, you know, when they're, when they're doing lateral, because it's a, it's a pace scale thing, you know, and a cultural thing, so, it's, I know, I seen Mr. Floro on the back, whatever, he was able to get a really good teacher because of that, on a lateral move, just a day or two ago.
Can you say again? Next, we have our principals report, Mr. Mullins.
Good evening, thank you for letting me come here and do some bragging on our both programs, our school and our program. I do have some facts here, so I'll try to be as, not too long, but want to talk about this past year. Mercer Central, we had a total of 77 students go through Mercer Central at some point during the school year. 29 of those students graduated, and every senior that was at Mercer Central graduated, and three graduated early. So, 16 of those graduates were virtual students. Four of the graduates are going to a college, including Warhol State and Southern Illinois University. Martha shared that this was the most, most transcripts that she got requests for since she'd been at Mercer Central, Mercer Day Treatment. And then multiple students went back to, went back to Mercer Senior at, at Christmas break, or some will be going back to start the next year. One thing that we really improved this year was post-secondary ready, and Mr. Floro in the back here really helped us over last summer, and at the beginning of the year, because we, we did not realize the 300-plus hours for co-op was a, was a possibility for post-secondary ready for our students. But here's some of the facts that we have, 10 students became academic ready through ACT scores. Out of those 10, two of those were willing to retake their ACT score, our ACT test, and they approved their score to become academic ready. Four of our students were, were post-secondary through the initial certification in welding and automotive. 22 students are post-secondary ready by completing 300-plus hours in co-op. Out of our seniors who graduated, we only have four students that did not earn a post-secondary requirement, which we wished they had, but in the positive, we have a lot more, a lot higher percentage this year compared to the last couple of years. Some of the other ways that, oh, before, we had two students, before they came to Mercer Central, they were able to earn post-secondary ready in their, in the program assessment, so we did have two of those. Other ways that they can earn post-secondary ready is passing the TOEFL test, build credit courses and ACT test scores, so we don't have any students in that. Beyond post-secondary, we, you know about our art program, there was presentation and graduation for that, but we're trying to go to a community service each year, and this past year was a community service to the Luger's Head Start just below us, and they made Christmas gifts for those students, wooden toys, and those kids just love it. And then one of the great things I heard from one of our students that will be back as a senior next year, is she said that Ms. Chaney, our math teacher, gave her the best math instruction she's ever had, and we inherited that student from another district, from two or three other districts, actually, so that was a great thing to hear. Day treatment, we can have up to 15 students, that's what the day treatment program, maximum. Day treatment is a 90-day successful program. Last year, we had 35 students go through our day treatment program. Out of those 35, several of them either went back to Mercer Senior, went back to King Middle, or chose to go to Mercer Central. Some of our students did move out, and both of Mercer Central's day treatment, some of our students did move out of the district for various reasons, but we did have 35 go through our day treatment program. We have had students complete their core classes, and mainly math, with our, with Ms. Chaney, Mercer Central instruction, because number one and one-two, and number two, they were at a higher level of math, so they did need that instruction, so. We have multiple students earned the right to work in the Mercer Central art program by their, by earning their, moving up the level system of behavior. Our students participate in cooking and other classes at the UK Extension Office, and some of our Saturday sessions are attended at the farmer's market, helping, helping the farmer's market, doing math lessons, and participating in social lessons there at the farmer's market at the fairground. We complete home visits with families on Saturdays, they enjoy that, because we do bring them a dozen donuts, sit on the porch or wherever. We do have a laser engraver, one thing that we, Mr. Mullins, I've talked about this year is making Mercer school items, Mercer day school items, coffee cups, water, water mugs that you see, and then coasters, because some of our students have used that to make gifts for their families at Christmas. And, and then Mr. Mullins does work with Ms. Collins about to use the wood shop throughout the year. I'll just say that this way, I'm very grateful, and our students and our staff are very grateful for your all support, I mean, I believe it's awesome to see all five of you there at graduation, and it's impressive to see that, you know, I'm sure that the people in the crowd may not recognize it, but, but we recognize it at the, at the school, and we appreciate that. We appreciate all the help that you all provide, I know that you get ready to later on in the program, look at the memorandums, memorandums of understanding and agreements from Kexac and DJJ, and your approval for that, and helps our program financially big time, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Appreciate it very much, Esther. Table, thank you very much for all your leadership, sir, and you had a great program, so be proud. Next is our elementary school update.
So, don't get disappointed, video this, this month is as impressive as last month, but our professional, your own pile is out of state right now, so we'll get you those as many times as we can. I wanted to give you a quick update, this is, again, just kind of continue to do the same thing, I do every time, starting on the east end of the building, kind of take you around. As you see, the building progressed, it's really starting to come together, and start to look like a building now, so it's just a bunch of locks and stuff going on, or, or I guess I hope it is. As the video comes around, you can kind of start seeing the way you can't start seeing the shape of the, of the gymnasium. So, in the last 30 days, they've continued the grain structures, and we're creating on the west side, which is there, it's what you're looking at now, where you can start seeing the gravel, started putting in this week. We've completed all of the milestone trusses in Area A and Melvin, and actually, Area A is closest to the road, far end, which is going to be your preschool and kindergarten then, it's, the roof is dry again. The contractors have continued working on all of the block work, as the building comes around, figured out now, we've started the building on the east end, and it's chasing everything to the west. They continue to put the hollow doors in Area C. Area C is your gymnasium, art media room, kitchen, cafeteria, so we're setting those frames, so we'll start walking in around those. Area D, which is actually, starting back up, leaning back next to the trees, that first did area there is, or the first grade, and that roof, the white, that you see on our footage, were finished roof, it's still passing. Some miscellaneous work will be done around the edges, but the roof is on that section as well, and it's ground in. The overhead fire protection and all the overhead electric in Area E, which is, the part, was the part of this from here, or what's closest to you now, on the right hand side of the screen, that's, again, your school shelter, and keep talking about these areas, because that's how we have to memorize, I'm sure by the time we get this project done, that's how, if you haven't already, that's how we will be able to memorize. And then next one, which is more of the same, again, we're just going in the building, chasing the other, and now we're getting, working on the building on the other end, the outside work, as you can see, the gravel is going down, and parking lots, but the outside work is going to start coming around in front of the building, so we just don't, we're trying to utilize work with people in as many places as we can, and not have the, and, or, all of it, so, it's, that's our construction path right now, so it's continuing to look like the driveway is supposed to make it look anyway.
Down in front of the building, where they're digging out there now, that driveway coming down from the building?
Yes, there's actually, there's actually going to be a closure to the road, working on building, there's a parking area, but that is the driveway, and what you saw dug in there is the storm sewer, that's going to be picking up any curbs or any, any storm sewers, so.
I saw them digging that, yesterday, I guess.
Yes, they started, of course, all of that, all of that big yellow material that we saw on the other end, that retention system is now disappeared, but it, of course, it's still there. But it goes way in, hides under that parking lot, and then that storm system will come around the front, that'll also kick some open between the two buildings, it's going to catch or, in between the two sections, that's what's going to catch your roof drains, and part of that water will start coming back toward this end, the bottom of the stream, that's where that additional retention pond is going to be, over on that side.
That would be open or not?
Well, we hope it's not hardly a hole.
You say hole, there'll be a hole.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I thought you said, oh, yes, it will be an open, there's, there's no need to put the expense on the underground retention there, because it's, it's not, it's not benefit for the expense, but that one will be, will be open, and will allow water to drain into it, and then drain out at a more reasonable rate, instead of just flowing away from sight. Questions, Sars?
You may get a step back, because my, first part of my superintendent report is the inside of this, that way you can answer any questions.
I don't need that sort of picture, you're very brave, are you, is that?
I have another question, it might be, it might be, I have a dumb question.
There's no dumb question.
Well, there is. You have heard all the questions. But, so that retention, that's going to be open, is, is going to blow out pretty good? It's not going to be standing, like, it's not going to collect water.
It's not going to be a standing pond, what it will be is what we have one in, and then there's an outlet on the other end, but it's, it's a, it's a retention, not a detention, and that's, that's always the key, retention is just a hole for a while, not detention with the whole.
But it will, I mean, it's not ever going to be full?
No.
For any length of time?
I hope, we hope not.
I was thinking elementary, so.
Absolutely, no, 100%, plus there's a fence around.
Okay.
So, there's, there's a fence inside around, but no, they're not designed to, where they'll stand full of water for days. And I'm, I'm going to use a very horrific example, like the situation that happened this past week in Texas, you know, when you have that kind of rain in that short time, you know, I can't say the thunder rain, and that, that cycle catches up the water, they will not feel that pond up, but it has on the north end, the north end, or back toward the woods, it has an inlet, an outlet, that is made just like the inlet, which is concrete structure, with a pipe, will hold it, and it comes out, that lets it, what it does, it just doesn't let it haul come at once, it holds it and let it drain at a certain rate until it drains all out. If you, if you end up with pond, and we have three different things, there are not, there are not going to be a pond.
Okay.
I said a pond, I said a whole pond there, and say there's not going to be a pond.
Okay.
It's constantly controlling the flow of the water.
It's constantly controlling the flow of the.
Then it was empty, then it was empty, then it was.
When you go into entrance, they, right on the right side of the entrance, there's a big retention pond there, and it's there that part. It pours down, right, it's a little bit.
I'm with you.
But, so it is an elementary school, and you did have small children.
They're basic.
This is designed as an additional security against the gates, that prevents people to just wander in.
Thank you.
Well, if nothing else, go ahead and move to your part. Secretary General.
Well, I was sharing with others that, you know, the, for over a year now, we were in the design phase, we've got to visit many, many elementaries to get, you know, steal some ideas, and things to do, or things maybe not to do, and if you all know how much it drained in the last six months, so I am going to be able to go out there, because I've got dress shoes on, I guess if I have my muck boots on, but anyways, I guess it was yesterday, we were able to put the hard hat on, and the high visibility vest on, and that, this is my first inside tour of the new elementary, and it was, it was really, really good to see, just something that you've thought about, designed, and seeing on paper, just to let it come out of the ground and come to life. So this is walking into the front doors of the, the elementary school. Here, you can see the gym on the left, that's how you'll go to the gym, where that guy in the red is, and then on the right, of course, you've got your steam room, and then on down there's your library, and your art room, so that'll be your entrance there, coming in, then I took a, I took a right-hand turn, going down that hallway, that's the next picture, golly, right there, so that's looking down through the kindergarten into preschool, and then that door you see at the very end is where the kids will come to be, so, and out. One feature that I'm really glad we did, was we did those knockout, we knocked the wall back, you can see how far it is, how wide that, the hallway is, instead of it being the narrow part, like some woods all down through there, that's going to be really nice, where we're going to put some furniture in there, where those toolboxes are, where kids can go out there and work with, with teachers or instructional assistants individually, it just makes that, that, just makes the field feel so much larger having those areas, the knockout, the cobbleback on this side. So that's the kindergarten looking back into preschool, that front wing you see, that's the, the A and B, right, that's B looking into A.
Yes, correct, you're coming from B as the front entrance, and you're looking back through A.
And then you can, this is, these are things you can't see from the road, obviously, but you've got your fire suppression system, your sprinkler system already in, you can see the cages on the left side, that's where all your data wire and things will go for your internet, but all those things are already in there, and the, matter of fact, the sprinkler head hoses are already wound up, ready for drop ceilings, and they're ready to just put them in the drop ceiling, so I thought that was pretty neat. And this is just, this is looking at the resource room, so I'm, I'm in one classroom, this is a kindergarten, kindergarten classroom, you can see the door on the left, what's got plumbing in, that's the kindergarten bathroom, and then the door on the right is that resource area, that where therapists, special ed teachers, instructional, whatever, can bring kids out from either side of the, you know, the classroom's here, and then there's one on the other side, and they can go in there and work individually, or as a group, with four or five students at a time, in that room, that room is going to be really, really nice instructional for us, and that was neat to see, that's starting to come together as well. So this is at the end of the preschool hallway, and I'm just showing you the doors where the little kids will come in, the preschools, three and four-year-old, will come in, and again, you can see the ceiling there, they've already got the sprinkler, I guess the sprinkler system are about in everywhere, right, that there's a roof, right?
Yeah, everyone that would get bored, just in the day, going, or, 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 they're beating that entrance. It's like we're talking about chasing, that means take your time, chasing from end to end, but also chase it from the top down, you start from your sprinkler, then your electric, then your data, and then your HVAC, and stuff, so, it's just, it all adds up, and something I want to point out that he touched on in that picture again, we talked about toilet a lot, a lot during design, is how open that makes that hallway look right there, I mean, that, that looks huge, and there, there are steps back, and then there's places where it's an normal-sized hallway, but when you start looking at a long one, and it, it looks narrower than it really is standing going in, but this gives you so much extra square footage, and it didn't hurt the classroom signs at all, so this is, it's a really neat feature that, that's been designed into this building, it'll come out nicely and especially.
I agree, and I, I know over the years, we'll have many people in other districts coming to tour the school, and I'm sure that'll be, you'll see that pop up in a lot of signs in schools now. Okay. So this is where the preschools are entered, so that's on that, that's on the east end, you called it, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's on the east end, so that's where preschool, the, the parents loop around, the drop-off right there, there'll be a awning that comes out over top of that, and that's where the, the end of the school looks like. So I was really surprised, seeing the courtyard, how big it is, it is a really big courtyard, so right there where that gravel is, that's going to be where the preschool playground is, and you can see the doors on the left side, those preschool classrooms, they'll just open that, their classroom door, and walk right out there to the playground, and then in the very back, where that tall is, that tall piece is, that's the gym, but then right in front, there's the library, and then in front of that, in the actual courtyard is where the, the outdoor classrooms are going to be, so that's going to be a neat feature of the school, where kindergarten, first, second, you can go outside and have class out, out there in the courtyard, and then it's also blocked from the community and from, you know, the surrounding areas, it's kind of, it's isolated by itself.
Yeah, it's a very secure area as far as visual, it's very, it's very large, once you, once you went there and looked at it.
Now, this is in second grade, which is Area E, and knock on wood, it, that, these new tornado or weather shelters, it's, this thing is built to where it can withstand, I mean, anything. I looked at the eye, the eye beams are the largest eye beams I've seen, and of course, it's all concrete beams, and all that block is all filled with concrete. it's all concrete beams, and all that block is all filled with concrete in the holes down in the walls. But you can see HVAC, you can see they've already run that in second grade, laying on all the HVAC ductwork is already in. Of course, you can see the, the sprinkler systems are in, fire alarm wiring is in, ready for the fire alarm, scroll lights and horns. But this is in a, one of the second grade classrooms. And in this, I was just taking this picture to show you how much ductwork and HVAC. Like I said, when you're looking from the road, you, you wouldn't think all this is already completed, so a lot of the work of it's up top, and the ceiling is already complete as far as HVAC. You can see where they're running the wires down through there, but a lot of that work's already completed, and a lot of the plumbing's already completed on this project. And then this is when I walked, my first time entering the cafeteria, and I was so happy because I said, we want a big glass window so it doesn't feel so confined. And there's three huge windows on the backside of the property for the cafeteria, so that's where those openings are. And then I was in awe of, you can see at the top of each opening, this first opening, how big of concrete beam that they poured, and it's, I guess it's still drying because they've got the steel, stilts or whatever on there, but it is just a lot of concrete, a lot, lots of concrete. But that's gonna be beautiful when those windows get put in, just to give the kids daylight and be able to see outside. Again, that's the first look in, in the cafeteria. And then this is, I'm standing in the kitchen, so it's almost like I'm at the serving line, serving the kids when they come through. Now the windows are on the left, and the gym's on the right. So this is like the, the cooks will have when they're serving the kids, they'll be looking out over the cafeteria there, seeing the kids. This is the look that the band or the choir director will have. That's, that's in the choir room, looking back at the, there's the stage opening into the gym, so this is where they'll have class, have music class, it's little kids there. So the music teacher will probably stay in that particular area, probably, looking back there. But again, not only, I want to show you the stage there that's there, but also that beam that they put in over top of the opening for the stage, it, it's just, it's, really the picture doesn't do justice how big a concrete slab that is going across of that beam. Those guys were working hard filling in those 12-inch blocks yesterday. Now, I think the last picture, this is like if you're walking in the gym from the front entrance, remember I said that guy in the red on the left? So that, I was going through that door right there, so you can see the, on the far right's the P, teacher's office, and then there's a storage room, and then that big opening, of course, is the, the stage opening. And that gym is really, really nice size. And that wall is gonna go all the way up to almost that top yellow line, so they still got, I don't know, 10 or 12 feet to go on that, and then they'll be completed with the germs. So, is there any questions on the inside? It was really, really neat to see this.
We're on that window in the cafeteria.
Oh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be big.
I mean, you want to talk about what's happening inside?
Yeah, it was really, I, I come away, I told Caleb, I said, this is unbelievable, really to see just things that you see, think in your head, or you see on paper, and all these plans, just to, now you can, you know, they're telling people how to build it, and they're, and they're just bringing it out of the ground. And it was really neat to see how the masons, the electricians, the plumbers, HVAC, the fire suppression system, all those people just work together and just all do everything they can for something. It was really neat to see.
There, there is, yes, there's so much, yeah, especially in the masonry schools, this is, very little, I was, you saw some of it down there, and that's mainly in the areas that were ready to do some policy and, and separate, or, or the structure of the building, predominantly on the masonry. And everything must be going on the wall, and like I said, especially in area E, the rest of the building, there's, there's specific areas that it's routed, it's, it's a mortar material that is used to make the building stronger, and it's committed, so every cell, every wall, every hole and the blocks are lined up at the top to the bottom of our school ground. So the corn mason, it's not like you can go in, okay, we missed the outlet here, so we gotta cut a hole in this wall and fish the water, but there's no fishing through, it's gonna go in when it goes in, and there's no getting back to it. So those guys, we have really been fortunate to have the quality of contractors that we have doing the work that's on the home side, and especially, not to say the, the amount of collaboration and working together. And I get a lot of credit, even up here, but I mean, so up to Caleb, but Caleb and our secretary, and Julie, you know, they, they have weekly meetings with these contractors. This stuff doesn't just happen by, by accident. It's, it's a very coordinated and orchestrated building and, and production out there. A lot of times, it may look like orchestrated chaos, but it's, there's a lot of planning and a lot of pre-planning goes into it, so, you know, our team and their teams combined, they, they think this done this, and, and it's, we're, we're really proud of what we're doing for you so far, the quality of their, of the work that everybody's putting in. We've worked with Mason, we've worked with the electric contractor, we've worked with the HVAC contractor, we've worked with the sprinkler contractor, all these, you know, and those are just ones we're talking about, I'm not leaving out any contractors because they're not good, these are just ones we're talking about, not this, this particular structure or section structure, but they're all good quality contractors, and, and they think, you know, they're craftsmen, they take pride in their work. It's a trade that's, that's, I hate to say, but, you know, it's not as predominant as it was 20 years ago, but these guys are, it is what they're still crafting, what they're doing. And you really start to see it when, when the exterior facade goes out. They did start laying some of the, the lower stone to there. We get a very good picture of the cherry that we've seen in the model out there. That's what's really gonna transprove this building in the summer, it will be what we're expecting, which is once that facade starts going on in the next few months.
And the best news of all is that we've had a ton of rain this spring, and he's ensured me that we're on time, on schedule.
Right now. Right now, we had that conversation in the office just before we came over here. We're still, we're, we're still, we're still targeting our dates, and, and right now, we're gonna say that. So, keep our prayers alive. Anything else?
No, I'll say it all.
The things you, I appreciate you all letting me get on my, my soapbox, and, again, this is the team that does this, I just, I just get the pleasure of spending time with you.
Get it all closed, get it all closed down before whoever hits.
That's the goal, working side.
Some, some, just a couple other notes here. Academics, we got AP's, the best placement scores back. We had 60 last year pass AP tests, and this year we had 68. So we see an 8 over 10% increase, that was really good for the high school. To have 68 passing scores on the AP test for a high school. I was able to visit on Friday, went, drove down to Bowling Green and back, and was able to stop at some high, high schools that just installed turf, or installed a whole new facility, and really got some good ideas for, and, and then I've also seen, there's a lot of schools up there that have some nice, nice stadiums too, so, but anyways, I'll, I'll share those pictures, I already shared those pictures as well when I got back. But that was, that was neat to see, just the different types of facilities, different types of turf, there was three different turf, turf companies, and then I was able to see what the quality and, and the turf, but they all looked really, really nice. Look, we're excited, each year we've got a, we do our leadership retreat with the district level directors and building level principals. That's at Lockridge Park again in Girding County, we're gonna go out there Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, so we're looking forward to that, we have a great time, do some team building and talk about our goals and plans for this upcoming year. And then right after that, we go to KASA, annual state leadership conference on Wednesday evening, Thursday, and Friday. So, looking forward to a lot of learning and, and planning for this upcoming school year next week. I've got this in the, well, this Kentucky school advocate, and we had a couple of board members that are just giving their diplomas away to their, their kids in there, so it's neat to see your all's pictures, and they're giving the diplomas away. And then next month, the board meeting, at the August board meeting, we'll swear in Nora Martin, who'll be a senior at the high school, we'll swear her in to be the student board member for this upcoming school year. So, any questions?
Okay, eventually I can send you the items, everyone should know, typically get those ahead of time. Does anyone have any questions, or Jason, do you have anything?
Well, I was gonna add a couple comments, the surplus equipment, that bus is a good bus, so I'm recommending that if you all surplus it, we'll bid it out and see if it can take bids on it, see if someone wants to purchase that, because it is a hybrid bus, so I think it's the first hybrid bus that we're getting rid of that's, that's aged out. So, I wanted to discuss that. And also, you know, each month, probably for the first few months until we get this site, Senate Bill 181 Traceable Communications, we'll have to approve maybe or take off some approved traceable communication that we use. This one, the seven H's for our BCTC students that do, do a credit with us, they've got three, they use three platforms that we don't use, and that's Blackboard, Outlook, and Starfish. And then also, two of our schools are gonna use the Ron Clark Academy, the app that he has, so we would ask for our district to approve that as well, so those are just a couple things. But like I said, each, each month until we get this going, we'll probably have to do some traceable communication tweaking, additions and subtractions.
Questions or discussion? If not, can I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Mrs. Franceschi with the motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Hart, second, all in favor? Uh, we do have some action items up for discussion next. First one will be the school emergency plans, second reading. We have four second readings to go over and prove, so go ahead, Mr. McHenry.
Well, I'm just here to answer any questions that I have, please. Will you have a chance to go through all those, those areas? Sorry. Just here, if you had any questions, I can try to answer, if you have questions to go through them, or, to go through some of the school plans, if they submit as far as our emergency plans provision in the master schedule, that they have to share with you all.
Questions? Okay, can I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion, can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mrs. Hart, second, all in favor? Now the police department policy, second reading. I should have lifted those ahead of time, you didn't mean that, although, so, any questions from you all? And it's the second reading, so can I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Prue with the motion, can I have a second? Mrs. Franceschi, second, all in favor? Second reading about board policy updates. Does anyone have any questions, or Jason, do you have anything to those?
Nothing changed since the motion.
Uh, can I have a motion for approval as the second reading?
Make a motion.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion, can I have a second? Mrs. Franceschi, second, all in favor? Board procedural updates, second reading. If no questions, can I have a motion for approval on those?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Put second, all in favor? Finally, this is a BG5 for the district paving and asphalt. Thank you, we've got some information.
This is just closing out the paving and asphalt project from last summer, and this is the final step. Just needs your all's approval so I can push it on through the system.
Any questions? Not, can I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Mrs. Hart with the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery with the second, uh, this is a funny read, roll call this one, or is this just straight?
Uh, this is, yeah, this is...
With money, I was in motion.
I mean, on the area, I have this, can you say?
Okay.
One vote.
All in favor? Uh, the next items are roll call votes. Uh, the first one up is the Compton Valley Family Medical Center agreement.
So this is, uh, this is the helping kids, the contract that we did last year, and we are saying that recommend a motion for this, is to approve this agreement pending our board attorney, of course, reviewing this contract, do any additions to that. Did you wanna say something about the dental?
So we're, we're, I see that family medical do our dental program six through 12, and then you're gonna see the next ones for the Justin County, they're, they're going to say into our elementary schools. So the dental would just be the middle.
That's correct.
What is the, what is the cost? Is there a cost savings or an increase cost in that change?
For dental, there's no cost for either program for us.
For us, okay, yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
Was that the only major change, just because I didn't have a side by side?
Yes, I think the, 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 sorry.
No, it's all right. It's okay.
Are you kind of, had a dental, what we're asking, it's just this major contract that they, they typically use, and we have included everything on it as opposed to last year, where we just had the specifics for the nurses. It doesn't mean we have to use any of those areas, but those are just things that we could use. So, um, the dental is on there, even though it said, you know, it's just dental, but we're only going to request to use them for our middle school and the high school. So, that was sort of, that's the big, the biggest difference is the contract is a little bit different than last year, because last year we were super narrow.
Right, okay.
Well, I, I just want to share that actually with one of my high school kids did utilize the program once over the past year, and it was excellent. So the nurse practitioner showed up within 30, 45 minutes, she did, you know, strep, flu tests, he was okay, he had all in favor, very, very low, they gave him some time and all, and we made the decision to move him to high class. So he didn't have to check out. I didn't, I did get, you know, the bill, and it was not any different than I would've been billed if I'd have checked him out, took him to the primary. So it did save construction time, and it was really a smooth process, so, and that can be kind of, can be really good. Yes.
Working like a boss.
Yes, that's right. That's how it's supposed to be.
As long as the plan comes together.
Right, yes.
If nothing else further on this one, can I have a motion for approval? But again, this is also pending our board attorney's review.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mrs. Hart with the motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Montgomery, second, roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Franceschi. District two, Amy Hart.
Yes.
District three, Bill McGovern.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Uh, just a county health department, MOU, yes, there's our leaders in this.
This is the, this is the company that the rescue use now for the dental program, and at elementary school, during the school, they really like this program. It's a little bit, it does cleanings, whereas the current family medical will do, will do fillings and things like that, so it's, you know, they were a little bit concerned about going, you know, truly switching it totally over, so they asked to just be able to stay with the program that they know this year, so, and, you know, you were okay with doing that, and, and we're in very medical asylum doing that, they said, you what, what may happen is the parents who have high school and middle school parents, or kids wanting to bother, elementary children can't get their teeth in too, so, you know, it may eventually work out a lot of issues in recovery, but currently they get a request to stay with Justin County Health Department.
Can you have any questions? Uh, if not, can I have a motion for approval? Mrs. Franceschi with the motion, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, second, roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Franceschi. District two, Amy Hart. District three, Bill McGovern.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Uh, final, uh, roll call vote will be in salary schedule.
You can go through a board meeting without a salary schedule update, once we break down. Um, you know, isn't it, we give little things right now, we keep catching as we are now putting everyone on their new salary table, so I'm sure we will find more as we continue to do that. So, um, one of the attachments just outlines the three things that, that are the changes. So, one of them is just changing and arranging days, because we have moved one of the people in one of those positions down to 180 days because of their request, and so we have to show that reflection on the salary schedule. Um, one of the positions... One of the positions on there, actually, just, we don't have that position any longer. We had to add it back on the salary schedule last year due to someone who was here retiring, and so then we just had to remove it again. And then there is a cycle change on there as well. Any questions? I would like to say I promise there won't be any more, but I can't make that promise because, like I said, as we literally go person by person, magic everyone up, making sure everyone's salary looks correct, we find random little things that were like, oh, yeah, and that kind of thing, so we're tweaking that as we need to.
Questions? If not, can I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pruitt, second, roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Franceschi. District two, Amy Hart. District three, Bill McGovern.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. May I have a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to KRIS 61.810F?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pruitt with the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, second, all in favor?